Good evening. Thank you for your patience. This meeting of Baltimore City Council, Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee is now called to order. I'm Councilman Robert Stokes representing the 12th District and Chairman of this committee. Also on this committee is Council Vice President Sharon Green-Melton from the 6th District, Councilman Zeke Cohen, Member of the Committee from the 1st District. We have Nina Themis from Mayor Scott's office. We have Tiffany Macklin from President Mosby's office. We also have Trey Hayes, who is the Chair of this committee. Before I start, I wanted to, the first hearing is going to be on athletic trainers here in Baltimore City, but before it starts, I wanted Mrs. Mrs. Santrice Shaw, who is the mother of Elijah Gorm, unfortunately passed away playing something that he loves against Dunbar. So Ms. Shaw, if you'd like to come up to the mic, press the button on the right-hand side and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Shawn Tress Shaw, the mother of Elijah Gorm. Elijah Gorm Act 836 was implemented for all athletes to have the opportunity to play safe. AEDs and CPR training in person for all coaches and staff athlete trainers, EMTs on the field. For the concussion protocol, Elijah played football. He was disciplined, he disciplined himself. He had core values as a student athlete. My son Elijah is a brother, a sister, and an uncle, just like every athlete across our state. Our student athletes, our student athletes lives, lives, lives matter, their lives matter. I'm sorry. Having athlete trainers in our schools are our responsibility to protect them. Our seven-strong foundation in our village is committed to their, committed to their safety. All of our players, all of, we want all of our players to make, to make sure each and every one of them go home safely. As a mom and a football mom, on 19, on September the 18th, 2021, I received a call from my daughter that Elijah was injured. He hurt his neck. Everything around me stood still. My heart stopped. I couldn't breathe for three weeks. I prayed. I played music. I called his best friend so he could hear his voice, praying he would wake up. So his fingers would just move, so he can just squeeze my hand. On October 11th, 2021, my life stopped. There isn't a day or a second of me trying to remember the last time I heard his voice. Before I dropped him off for this game, Mervo versus Dunbar at Poly High School, funk, that's what I called him, I call him funk. Have a good day. Have a good game. Ball hard. I love you. Poly football, the Poly football field in the end zone making a touchdown is the last time my son walked, talked, ran, played football, or seen his family. This is the last time he was conscious. Elijah had more life to live, more than a football player. Elijah and Ira Gorm, I love you, son. These are the things that I'm striving for, for all our athlete, athlete students all around us, to continue to play safe. This is what I'm working so hard for, for all of the Elijah Gorms all around us, to continue do what they do. So I just want to say thank you for inviting me, for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. God bless you and your family. But before we start, I just thank the city or your son and every athlete in this city, athletic trainers, because your son loved football. We know it's a dangerous game, but there are other sports. If we don't have athletic trainers there, what happens to those other kids? So we're going to make sure that we move forward and make sure we have enough athletic trainers in this city, because if we not, if we don't have them, how do we make sure our kid's safe when they're playing sports in the city? So again, thank you for coming here. We appreciate you coming here. I know it's hard, but I wanted you to be here because we owe you that. The city of Baltimore owes you that. So again, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Today, the committee is holding a hearing on two resolutions. The first hearing is the Council Resolution 23-189R informational hearing, athletic trainers in Baltimore City Schools. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Public School, the Board of School Commissioners, and the Office of Control to brief the City Council on reported shortage of athletic trainers in Baltimore City Schools, including a discussion of progress on the settlement agreement reached in 2022 to hire additional athletic trainers to prevent injury to our student athletes at city schools. First, we will hear from, I guess, we don't have no city agencies, agent reports. Okay, we're going to skip there because Mr. John Davis is going to be presenting. We're here from the representatives from the school system. Mr. John Davis is the Chief of Schools. Could you introduce your staff and then proceed with your presentation?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. As Councilmember Stokes said, my name is John Davis. I'm the Chief of Schools, and I'm joined here by Tiffany Byrd, our Athletic Director, and Melissa Broom, our liaison. And we're gonna, we welcome the opportunity and thank you for allowing us to talk through our progress with athletic trainers. And with that, I think we'll go ahead and begin. And we'll actually start with the title slide, because that is the first athletic trainer that has been hired in Baltimore City Public Schools. Her name is Brittany Jackson. We'll talk a little bit more about her, but we put her right on the front for that reason. Let's keep going. Right, and this is the purpose of this discussion, is to brief City Council on the enhancements made to interscholastic athletics and also include the progress on staffing high schools with athletic trainers by the end of school year 2425. The agenda and how we'll go through this is the athletic trainer updates. We'll talk about that a little bit. We want to talk a little bit about just globally, the health and safety requirements, some of the protocols we have around athletics, and then we'll be clear about the challenges and the commitments we have moving forward. Right, this is just the overall philosophy around making sure that students have appropriate prevention strategies, proper recognition tactics and treatment to really foster a safe environment for students, right? Athletic health and safety is an important part, even though many of us love sports, we have to do it in the most safe way possible, and that's what we're committed to doing. Here's the journey that I want to spend just a little bit of time talking about. Between 2017 and 2019, there were different grants that we pursued frankly unsuccessfully, because the thought that we needed athletic trainers is something that the Athletic Department has been really trying to think and organize around for a while. We were selected for a grant around the 2122 season, but it was really around '22 where we made the commitment. And we heard from Ms. Shaw a little bit ago, and I just want to take a moment. She has worked with us in this. She has came into meetings with us. She's talked through what she thinks is the right thing, and we have agreed that in the end, we're going to have athletic trainers for all of our high schools. And again, I know we heard her at the beginning, but I just want to thank her for her perseverance in this and for her really keeping us to task and making sure that we do exactly what we need to do. So in '22, '23 last year, when we put money in the budget for this, we looked around Maryland, and the best practice was really to have a contract with hospitals and medical facilities so that they could provide athletic trainers. And that is the path we started to go down. We even created, I think, an agreement with, with a medical institution so that we could go down that path and begin having trainers, but frankly, that did not yield any results. And so in the spring of last year, we pivoted and changed and said, instead of doing that, we are going to hire our own trainers. Again, that was a best practice in the past, but then we started and said, no, we're going to hire our own trainers. The first thing we did hire, though, and that's what you see in the far right-hand side, is a manager of health and safety. She has been on for a while now and has gone to two games, gone to practices, and is really the linchpin and the starting point of our work around trainers. Let's keep going. Here's the health and safety team. I already mentioned Athletic Director Byrd, and the first person we hired was Allison Hammond. You can see her there, the manager of health and safety. And the very first athletic trainer I mentioned before, her name's Brittany Jackson. She is currently housed at Forest Park and has already began to make inroads there. Carolyn Seabans is the second person that we have hired. She starts in January. We have progress that have been made on a third, a fourth, and a fifth candidate, and we're hopeful in the coming months to have them onboard as well. When we weren't successful with the initial plan to contract out with medical institutions and we pivoted and said, we're going to hire our own, we started off by saying, okay, we're going to hire five. Can we do that? We've made good progress this year, and if we can hire all five, we're going to go past the five and try to hire even more so that we can get to the, to coverage for all schools as quickly as possible. Here's some points about the manager of health and safety. And again, this was our very first person that we hired, Allison, and because she was the first one, she's been somewhat like a trainer in some of the work that she's done. You can see she goes from a head athletic trainer. She does a lot of one-on-one consultations. In the end, she's going to oversee all of the athletic trainers and all of the health and safety work. There's a lot of compliance and a lot of alignment we have to do with state and national regulations. There's a lot of medical coverage she has to make sure she is aware of and making sure is implemented. And then she'll be very thoughtful in how she recommends revisions to our own standards. We have not had a manager like this before, so we're grateful that we have her, and in the end, she's going to influence a lot of the work. And then we thought it would be appropriate to give some basic information about the role of an athletic trainer, right? They come licensed as healthcare professionals, right? They're going to collaborate with other medical staff in the schools, such as our nurses. Their main domain is what you can see there with respect to injury prevention. They'll do examinations. If there is immediate emergency care, then they will be there, therapeutic intervention. And then, like I said, they will also be instrumental to look over our policies and making sure that we're doing everything we can to have a safe environment for our athletes. We thought it would be appropriate with our very first athletic trainer just to have her give a quote and to also hear from a student. So I'm going to go ahead and read that out loud, and this is from Ms. Jackson. Working in Baltimore City thus far has been a pleasure. I am grateful that I am able to showcase my knowledge through connecting to the community and educating them about their body. My goal is to ensure athletes stay healthy now and beyond. We also talked with a student, and his name's Jayon, and he said, since Ms. B started here, she has helped me so, so much. Without her, without her here, I feel as if I wouldn't have been able to get back as fast and as hard, or excuse me, as I had. She's such an enjoyable person to be around with a great personality, which also makes her a joy to be around. And again, as someone who has worked with trainers in the past, it's not just the medical part. It is another caring human being that can be there, right? When a child is injured, the prevention part, and I think you're seeing that in both of those quotes. And this is a quote from the Athletic Director at Forest Park. The moment she steps in the building, everyone feels better. She has been a boost in our athletic program's mental and physical health from day one. She not only wraps ankles, but she has also wrapped her arms around the program, and our athletes look forward to her arrival every day. She has truly made it an easier walk at the park. And that's from the Athletic Director at Forest Park. And while this particular informational hearing was really around athletic trainers, I would be remiss if I didn't say there is a lot of health and safety requirements and protocols, right? I mean, some of these things, I think, any athlete knows that they've been through from their times. But what I also want to point out is, since working with Ms. Shaw, some of the things on the right that are highlighted in green are things that we have either enhanced or improved, and that's really the difference in the color coding, because again, it's part of our improvement, it's part of our commitment, it's part of what happens when we have a manager of health and safety. Our challenges and our commitment moving forward. The challenges are real. Like a lot of health professionals, and I'm sure the council has heard this before, there is a national shortage. It is a very competitive environment. It does not say that there. But the places we are taking and have taken athletic trainers from are places that may not be happy about that, but we want the best for our Baltimore City students, so we're going to use whatever networks we have to fill those vacancies and make sure we have athletic trainers. But at the same time, I want to be clear that it is a, is a competitive market right now. There was a COVID effect, there's an increased educational requirements, and frankly, there are fewer accredited degree programs in Maryland than there have been in the past. But what we have done is made sure that we've, we work through the National Athletic Trainers Association and posting there nationally as well as locally, right? We have, we have a very competitive salary, and as I've told the team, we've got to keep watching this. Sometimes we put a salary out, and we think that that's it, and we can move forward, but we're going to have to watch the, we're going to have to watch some of the neighboring jurisdictions to make sure that we stay competitive and don't just rest on that. We have a very good benefits package and a care versus coverage model. I would also be remiss if I didn't talk through what comes with the athletic trainer, is we are working hard to enhance and improve the facilities at our schools to make sure that not only are they covered by athletic trainers, but that we've got a facility so that when someone does need to be treated, they have a great place to go. You can see some of the other enhancements with respect to preparation of the training room. You can see those, see those pictures. And in the end, we've had a lot of our athletic events covered already by athletic trainers just because of the manager position, but we know we need one, and we need that coverage throughout the district and throughout our high schools. And with that, we'll take questions.
First, I'd like to recognize Councilman Bullock, Member of the Committee. Also, I'd like to recognize Alice Perkins, Alice Perkins Cohen, Chief of Staff to the school CEO. Real quick, I think it's important, Councilman Bullock just came in with his two sons, and they run track. You know, we want to make sure they're safe also. They enjoy running, so this is the reason why we're having this hearing, to make sure that happens. My first question is, I guess, Channel 11 had mentioned about salaries. I know they got to be competitive. What are the salaries you're paying for the three or five you have?
You're asking for the salary range?
Yes. What is this? I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Currently, the salary range begins at approximately a little over $72,000. If you're speaking to the coverage model that used to be through contracted services, and I think that's why we've been successful, the amount that you pay to the contracted service, the trainer was not receiving that amount. There are local colleges that do not start at salaries that high. We even had a gentleman from a professional organization in a smaller position say that the starting salary is not that high. So it's not a hiring season, but we are attracting very experienced candidates due to this salary.
So are you, actually, if it's competitive, are you all, introduce a higher salary so you can get those qualified athletic trainers here in this, at every school, because we only have, what, you said, three?
Right.
So are you all making your salaries more competitive if you want to get that, those kind of athletic trainers in all our schools in Baltimore City?
Yes. When Chief Davis spoke of the shift, we, I think, were definitely in line with what was going on. There are only, out of the districts that are pretty much large districts in the state of Maryland, we are the third to do a direct hire position. If I'm correct, our starting salary is slightly higher than Baltimore County, not quite as high as Montgomery County, but we also have smaller programs on average than those schools offer. So we have gotten positive feedback from the interested candidates, and they have been very honest and direct in saying that the salary is part of the reason that they've expressed interest.
So do you all actually have persons in a pipeline right now? You still interviewing for these positions? Because we only got three.
Yes. Yes, we do have people in the pipeline. We've hired two, and we've got at least three other viable candidates that are in the pipeline. We've got a lot of things to check out with them before we can actually hire them, but yes, they're absolutely in the pipeline, and I think that we can get through these five in the next few months, and if we can go farther than five, we're going to go farther. Our commitment was to get coverage for all high schools by the end of the 2425 season, but we want to try to break that. Like I said, at the beginning of the year, we didn't even know if we could get five, but when we see that we've got some momentum, if we can go past that, we're going to. And yes, we've got some people in the pipeline.
So can you make sure as you hire, you make sure we get that information, keep us up to date?
Updates on that.
How many you have, how many additional ones you're hiring? I'm going to go and let Council Vice President Melton, if she have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this hearing, just very important. Looking over the health and safety requirements and protocols, is there like also a partnership with the school police? Because I know they go through rigorous training as a regular police officer, and then some of their skills, it seems like it would be a nice, and they deal with students and walking on grounds, through the fields, in the halls. Is there some kind of partnership that could happen there with just helping with some of that health and, some of those health and safety protocols?
Yes, we're fortunate, I guess, to have a school police department within city schools, so they are definitely a part of our event management. When we start out, they're often the person that will make the first response call. They're definitely trained, so we utilize them when we have events. They're, for the events that they're staffed for, because I can't say that they're assigned to like every sport, but for the events that they're staffed for, there's definitely a partnership, and those that are trained sometimes also help with the training. If they're not, if they have the coursework and certification to actually train others, then they also support us in that way.
And my second question is, since we're getting ready and going through the blueprint for Baltimore or, and the state, is there, how is that connection going to work? Or is there going to be a connection to help with that blueprint?
I have to be honest, I'm not sure if there's a direct connection for that. I will say that a lot of the Kerwin money ends up going to schools, so I think that in working with our high schools, having a position like Athletic Director, I think that, I think that's what gives me real belief that we'll be able to fund it moving forward, because if we're real honest, I showed you that journey slide. Part of it was a funding issue at one time. So I think there is a connection with Kerwin, but I'm not sure if it's beyond that.
I don't think there's any specific call-out. Thank you for the question. I don't think there's any specific call-out in Kerwin for that. However, funds like the concentrations of poverty, I believe, could be used for, to support that.
Thank you. Those were my two to start.
Councilman Cohen?
Mr. Chair, that was actually similar to my question, was could, you know, the Kerwin and/or like, are there remaining ESER funds or, you know, any of the sort of new, because it sounds, in reading the challenges, like a lot of this is a funding issue, as we see in city government with a lot of our own vacancies, and some of it is salary and some of its benefits and all the rest. So I do wonder, like, are there some creative ways to use Kerwin, ESER, ARPA, you know, all these potential new streams that have come to city schools are going to be there in the next couple of years to try to tackle this issue?
I mean, that answer is yes, right? Between Kerwin and CPG, we're committed to making sure that this sustains and doesn't just start. Like I said, we're going to go even past five this year if we can, which is past our budgeted amount, and we're going to get as quick to the 15 as possible. So I think the funding streams are there. Allison, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, ESER is more challenging because this is the last year of ESER, so we could use it certainly, to your point, for, to help us this year, and then we just have to find out the replacement for that. So, but concentrations of poverty will continue. That's not for all schools. Hopefully, going forward, there's a little issue with that right now, but we're hoping that the poverty count changes so that it's, it's actually focused on our highest poverty schools, in which case it wouldn't be for all schools, but it is a significant source of money for many of our schools that could potentially help pay for this, because it does, it's part of it is to pay for wraparound services for, for schools, and I would think this would probably count in the language that describes wraparound services.
Appreciate that. Somewhat related, but in a slightly different direction, you know, seeing the amount, and ma'am, I am truly sorry for your loss and your son, and appreciate your great words and your advocacy on behalf of your child and all of our kids here in Baltimore, but seeing the amount of traumatic brain injuries that have occurred, not just in Baltimore, but across the United States, related to high-contact sports like football, have we changed any of our internal policies and procedures within city schools in order to recognize that when children, particularly adolescent children with developing brains are going out and engaging in very physical strenuous contact sports and tackling and running into each other, that, you know, it leaves a durable lasting impact on the skull, on the brain, and so on. What have, what have we done internally? I know that some states have looked at this, I think Maryland has, but just as a school system, have we taken a look at our own path as it relates to making sure our young people are safe and healthy moving forward?
Yes, there are a lot of protocols that are currently in place, but we are definitely active participants on the medical advisory for the state to make sure that we're involved in those changes, and we have made sure that we are adhering to all of the state guidelines. We haven't made any shifts outside of what the state requires, but it's something that we're constantly evaluating. I know that there are concussions in a lot of, a lot of other sports as well, and so we have reviewed those things, and we have not made any shifts or restrictions of any sports at this time.
Got it. All right. No, I appreciate that. I would just say that, to me, this is something that, you know, we should, I think, try to be ahead of the curve. You know, obviously, sports, football is a huge part of our city's culture and an important part of our city's culture, and just don't want to see more kids get hurt and have lifelong brain damage, as we're seeing with a lot of NFL players have, you know, that, that kind of scar, or in the truly unfortunate circumstances, end up paralyzed or dead. So I would just urge that we be aggressive in really thinking through our own internal policies so that we don't have kids get hurt. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Real quick, just a follow-up. Still concerned, we only have five, I mean, three or five. You have Councilman Bullock, we got basketball players, we got football players, we got soccer, so I'm really concerned about, we only have three. I know you're working hard and you talk about salaries, and I'm going to just use it. We did a ribbon cutting in Johnson Square, and some of the houses are set aside for the teachers, and we came up with teach where you live. Have you all talked to maybe Housing to put some incentive, not just into the salary, so how we can get those athletic trainers here? Since it's so competitive, we need to add some other things to that, get them here so they can, you know, be at a lot of the other additional schools here in the city. Have you all worked with any other agents, especially Housing, for incentive even with the salary?
I don't know that we have, but I have to be honest, I love the idea. I don't know that we have, but I have to be honest, I love the idea. Um, I mean, I think from my knowledge, most of the incentives usually are straight towards teachers, right? So other staff, I'm not really sure. Um, but at the same time, if there's something we can do around that, I think it's at least worth the, the conversation. Because yes, we are going to need as many incentives as possible as it gets more competitive and as we want to keep our good people.
And I think that's a critical point. While we haven't talked about housing, one of the things that we have definitely heard in the interviews and from the strongest advocate that we have, and that's the leader of the work for us, is our manager, Health and Safety, is the continuing education, the expenses associated with that. So that's something that she's definitely proposing. Chief Davis has been totally supportive of us, because as he stated, we want to attract them, but we also need to retain them. Because as other jobs open up, people will have more choices. So continuing education is a critical one that they have identified for us.
And if that happens, tell them they can move in the 12th district also.
Noted.
Councilman Bullock, no questions? Uh, we don't have any testimony, our testimony, Ms. Shaw already testified. If she want to testify again, she's welcome to do also. Ms. Shaw, you would like to say something else?
Um, as a parent with the school system, and I have nephews and my grandchildren as well. And Elijah has, he been at Northwood, Northeast Baltimore, at Leaf Walt, um, all his life and been a Mustang all his life. And to understanding for that these things have been implemented as of yet. Or the fact that these young men are still playing football and the sport is, I'm sorry. The Congressman, um, as he stated, that these young men are playing a sport that is very dangerous. And knowing that my son was at Poly for, on the ground for 60 minutes. And for every parent and every mom and every dad that's out there playing, to think about that all the time is on my heart. The things that I'm doing every day is for them. To know that they are able to go back home to their family, to be able to continue to play the sport that they love. As we said when we came in, that we have a game right now at M&amp;T Bank Stadium that we'll be able to enjoy. Today, I'm not able to enjoy my son. Everybody's able to go home. He came in with his children from playing track. And these things should have been the first thing we was able to do when Elijah transitioned on October the 11th. On September the 18th, that should have been a thing, that should have been on our minds, our hearts and our souls. As a parent, administrative, and everyone that seen that young man and who he is. He not only had a business, he worked three jobs off-season. It's not a man at 30 years old can do what this young man did at 17. As a mentor, at graffiti, Green Mount Rack, Cecil. All, all those things he did, all things that he wanted to do as a gentleman. So as everybody speaks about what you're trying or what we can, is what we need to do today. Not just for what Elijah and what happened to him, for the young men are playing now, is what I need to say. These things need to be done now. Because the sport is continuing to play. They're doing it. We have our Baltimore Ravens playing right now, cheering. I'm not there. I'm here advocating for them, for my son. I could have easily paid a ticket to be routing, shooting, shouting, but I'm shouting for them. In the name of my son, Elijah Gorham, his bill was passed, the Elijah Gorham Act, 836. That is what I'm doing, and this is what we should be doing as a city. As a state, a young man who lost his life, something that he does, something he loved. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw, you're absolutely right. And I know this council gonna make sure we be very vigorous about making sure we have every school have an athletic trainer in this city. And, um, we will follow up on the piece with the housing piece, because I think that's important to really get more people into the pipeline in terms of athletic trainers. Um, remember the committee, Councilman Glover, you have any questions, Councilman? Okay, are there any call-ins? Do you have another question? Oh, Council Vice President?
Just one quick one. I noticed one of the enhancements, you have preparation of athletic training room spaces. Are there spaces in all the high schools that, can you give an update on exactly what you mean by that?
Yes, our 21st century schools are pretty much equipped with those spaces. Other spaces, we are converting to use as a training room space in some of the older buildings. So each school has been charged with identifying them. As we go down the list, we're making renovations and modifications as needed to make sure that it can serve the purposes of a training room.
And that's the high schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for that cl, update.
Any more questions from the committee? Thank you. Um, I have a motion to vote on Council Bill 23 dash 0189 R. Waiting for a motion. Motion made by Councilman Bullock, second. Council Vice President, uh, Stokes says yes. Councilman Bullock? Councilman Cohen? Councilman Glover? Council Vice President? This motion passed, the resolution will be placed on second read of, at the next council meeting. Thank you. And Ms. Shaw, I will make sure that we stay on this. And you made a comment about athletes are still playing. That's the truth. And we don't want to have what happened to Elijah Gorham happen to another young man or young lady in this, um, school system. We are going to our next committee, um, resolution. The committee would begin the second hearing for Council Resolution 23 dash 019 R. Information hearing, Baltimore City School, Schools Payments to Vendors. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City School System, the Board of School Commissions, and, uh, Baltimore School Commissioners to brief the City Council on reported shortage of athle, mm, of vendors in Baltimore City Schools. And clean, uh, vendors in Baltimore City School, this is not right. This is not right. Excuse me. Okay, we, this hearing is for, um, uh, payments to vendors. So we are going to start off, um, with Chris Doughty, Chief Financial Officer, Baltimore City. Um, you can start also, sir.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Stokes. Um, my name is Chris Doughty. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at City Schools. And in addition to the colleagues who have already been introduced, I'm joined tonight for this part of the hearing by my close colleagues from left, Director of Accounting, Sri Devi Viramasheneni, Director of Procurement, Shabre Matthews, and Director of Budget, Stephanie Fay. Uh, we're very happy to be invited here to talk about this issue, to give an update and to, um, to discuss this. Uh, next slide. Oh, sorry. I maybe jumped in too fast. Uh, thank you. Um, start with a bit of an overview. And we, the city schools transitioned in July of 2023 to a new financial enterprise resource planning system, uh, sometimes called an ERP system. And it was the first time in 20 years that the underlying system that we use to do many, many things in the financial, human capital, uh, world was updated. Uh, we knew this was going to be a very, uh, significant project and we planned accordingly for it. Um, over the Fourth of July weekend was the key transition from the old system to the new system. And in addition to the expected and planned for, uh, growing pains of, of doing a once every 20-year transition, there was a gigantic software migration issue that really, really socked us, uh, right in the nose. Um, it caused a very large problem, uh, for a large number of vendors. And that was the shock to the system that we, that undeniably caused, um, delays and hardship for certain vendors. And I think it was, um, one of the reasons why, uh, this, this hearing was, was called. Um, essentially, as soon as we became aware of the issue, um, which we found out about from our vendors and, uh, in knowing that, uh, giant amount of, uh, purchase orders, which are the backbone of any payment system, didn't convey over to the new system. Uh, what did we do? Um, we essentially adopted a war room mentality and all hands on deck approach. We canceled all remote, uh, work, uh, agreements. We created a war room in the building. We transferred it, external consultant assets from other areas onto the vendor payment, uh, area. We approved overtime for all the people in our offices who can work on this. And, um, we created a bespoke vendor support email address specifically for vendors who may have been experiencing delays or problems in getting paid. Um, we don't want to sugarcoat this. It, it was a, it was a significant issue. And when council members heard from constituents about, uh, delayed payments, it, 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 um, it was certainly the case directly as a function of this unexpected migration issue, that even our, um, we think really quite good external consultants, um, they did, they didn't predict it, they didn't expect it. And it, it necessitated a multi-week, multi-month kind of process to get out from under it. We also know that whenever any vendor doesn't get paid as they expect to, when they expect to, and as they plan around, that's a very big deal. So we, we never take that lightly. Uh, and this particular set of circumstances was, uh, undeniably, um, unlike any experience we'd had in recent years. This was not a garden variety type situation. Uh, next slide. Specifically, and not to get too much into the details, but I know, um, council members want to know kind of exactly what happened. When we did our evaluation, as we did in this kind of non-stop war room, uh, type of setting, 3,361 purchase orders did not migrate from the old system to the new system. And it absolutely was not a case of just being able to, uh, as big as that number is, it, we couldn't just upload 3,361 documents, for example, which would have been, uh, would have, would have been done very easily. We essentially had to go back, purchase order by purchase order, and ensure, uh, that everything, uh, was there, that needed to be there. Because after all, we're, we're talking about significant amounts of money. And we didn't, we wanted to make sure that in that unexpected, um, situation, we didn't make it worse by making payments that weren't approved and appropriate or, um, to the right people, frankly. I mean, it, it really is a terrifying event, um, to go to a brand-new system. And at the time, there were some vendors who understandably would say, hey, can you just pay me my blank dollars? And as much as we wanted to do that, uh, we, we really couldn't because we, we had to go back and revalidate every single one of those 3,361 purchase orders. But, uh, we're very happy to be able to say, because we know that, um, promises of improved, uh, performance are not what you're after. Since that epic event happened in, over the summer, um, 2005, as of our data poll, which was a few days ago, so this number's already probably overtaken, but as of the other day, when we polled it, it was 2,005 individual vendors had been paid. Some of them more than once, but 2,005 unique vendors had been paid. 51,710 invoices had been processed, but in the new system, right? And not in a just, you know, do it now and make up for it later, but in the new system. Um, and that amount of money, which again is what we're talking about, uh, is 256 million, closer to 257 million. You know, that's 50-plus million dollars a month and 13 million dollars, uh, a week. So we, we have righted the ship, but we do not understate the, the pain that some vendors felt when we had this. Um, next slide, please. Um, and we also want to say that e, e, we, we have a lot of vendors and, and partly because of the size of our system, but there's also another reason why we have a lot of vendors. And we think it's a good thing. As, as the council knows, um, we have about 155 school buildings, the school, schools, and we have a very decentralized, uh, system where the principal really is the captain of her ship. And the principal knows her school the best, knows her needs the best. And those principals engage with a, a wide range of, um, of vendors. We at the central office don't say, for example, you get one vendor for this and one vendor for that. It would be a lot easier from a management point of view, but we proactively don't do that because, one, it's kind of soviet, and, and two, um, the, the, the principals are a very, uh, strong-willed, independent bunch who run their buildings, uh, like, 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 uh, like their businesses. And they will engage with the vendors that meet their needs, they will engage with the vendors that they've had good experiences with. So that's what leads to thousands of vendors and thousands of vendors who were affected by this. Another aspect that, that I, but all of the issues that vendors face are not only attributable to the big ERP switch. We don't, we don't want to suggest that either. There are, there are many instances where there are garden variety issues of why a vendor isn't being paid. What we tried to do when we had our, uh, all hands on deck, um, uh, you know, summer of, of digging out from under, um, the, the bad migration issue, is we tried to use the opportunity to, to help re-educate, retrain people on, on the school side of things and to inform vendors, uh, as much as possible, what, what the procedures are and what the best way to get paid is. And, and I'll just say one last thing on this. Very often, a principal and a vendor have a very good relationship. And we think that's, that's very good, right? They've proven they can do X, Y, Z, and they deliver on time what the principal or the staff wants. Sometimes that good relationship results in vendors doing some work before they have a purchase order. And, and that really, that's, that's a big problem, whether you've got the old ERP or the new ERP. The, often the, the hard-working vendor thinks they're doing the school a favor by getting started. You know, I'm going to get started on this work and then we'll let the paperwork catch up with it. Um, that is, I know where the finance department and the accounting department, that is highly problematic because rather than speed things up, it very often slows things down. When any work is, is begun or services are provided, absent a formal purchase order, that's an absolute recipe for a, a, a delay in payment. So we, we've tried to make lemonade out of lemons with our summer experience and remind vendors, who are our lifeblood? We, we, we love our vendors. I mean, we have relationships with vendors going back decades. And very often, the vendors are, um, you know, they're, they're from Baltimore, they have kids in the system. So we, we are, we not only like and value them, we utterly rely on them. So we tried to use the, um, the jolt to the system over the summer to let vendors know, uh, you really are not well-served if you start any work before you have a formal, uh, purchase order. And then we've also let people on our side of the transaction know, because the single biggest issue when a vendor isn't paid is that the person who ordered the goods or services, who's in a position to know whether the, the, the new slide came to the playground or the 50 tablets were delivered, they have to do what's called posting receipts. They go into the system and they say, yes, the slide, you know, the slide was what we expected and it came. 75 to 80 percent. 75 to 80% of non-ERP-related issues have to do with that person at the, at the end of the chain saying, yes, we got what we expected, and they post receipts. By prohibition, central office people cannot make that determination because we're the ones that send the money out, so there has to be another entity that confirms that the goods or services were paid. So I say that, you know, to, to just acknowledge that as much progress as we have made, showing those numbers in a previous slide, there are always going to be issues and we, and we want to proactively address them before we get an understandably upset vendor wanting to get paid, and it's already after the time they were expecting payment. And then I also, there are, there are hot links in this document, which I imagine, they're also on our website, but if this document gets posted, we sent out a letter to all of the vendors letting them know about the special email box and the rapid response team that we had set up specifically for these issues. And we reiterated kind of the most common reasons why an invoice gets hung up in the system, what it needs to have, what it should not have. So that's, that's the overview of the situation that we faced, the steps that we put in place. And I just want to end by saying, all of those materials we have in there, we, we think we've, we've spoken to our vendors, they're constantly in touch with us, they are not a shy group, and we, we really think that we've, have for a while now turned the corner, but we're not relaxing in any way because as soon as one vendor doesn't get paid on time, it's, it's a big issue and we treat it as such.
Thank you. I always believe if you do the work on time, you should get paid on time.
Yep.
My question to you, you have 51,710 invoices that have been processed. What do that process look like? When will they get processed? You have a new system. The new system can tell you if the vendor turned in all the paperwork, it was correct. How long is it going to take this 51,710, if it's processed? How long is it going to take before they get paid? Because if that process is any slower...
No, I'm glad you-
Everybody in this council will be getting emails again.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Councilman Stokes. By processed, we, we mean paid.
Okay.
Those 51,710 invoices are what generated the 256 million dollars. So that's just bad typing on my part.
Okay.
Process means successfully, fully processed.
So my question is, when you decided you wanted to put in some new software, did you reach out to the vendors so at least they would have been aware if this was going to happen?
Excellent question. Yes, we did. We, we sent a notice out to all vendors saying, as a matter of fact, in addition to alerting them in general about the new ERP system, what we did was we strongly encouraged them for their own self-interest to get us invoices in as quickly as possible and as soon as possible, basically to front-load the invoices. Now, it's actually, I think, part of the, part of the sucker punch that we got was our vendors responded by getting in a whole lot of purchase orders earlier than normal. So as, as everyone knows, anytime a fiscal year ends on June 30th, it's common that things dribble in after June 30th because a lot of people will invoice for the period ending June 30th, they'll get you the invoice by July 15th or even July 31st. What we proactively told our vendors was, we're about to make a switch of our system for the first time in 20 years. Get, get your invoices in, get your POs in, get everything in as early as possible. And it was that massive family of documents that was hit by the migration issue. So again, not everything didn't migrate, but the vendors were informed, they generally reacted the way we wanted them to, got a bunch of stuff in, and then we got hit by the, kind of a technical glitch.
My question is, when did you know that the, the new software was going to be installed? And when did you reach out to the vendors?
We knew that we were going to transition from the old system to the new system at, at the end of the fiscal year, so June 30th. And we sent the note out to the vendors around, beginning of May. So around with a couple of months lead time, we encouraged our, our vendors to get their stuff in.
So did you, my question is, did you run the software to see if it was, it would work? I mean, if you, a month from there and they still didn't get paid, did you, I mean, you get new software, you want to make sure it worked before you get phone calls and say, I did my work, but I haven't gotten paid.
Fair enough. We, we did with our consultants do a lot of testing and, a lot of testing, and generally it was quite successful, except for this issue of documents that were in the old system not conveying to the new system, which was the lion's share of the issue.
Thank you. Council Vice President, you have any questions? Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you just talk to us a little bit about the new system? Why the new system? What are the benefits of the new system? Because obviously it caused some hiccups, but apparently you believe that there's something positive about it, so why the transition and what are we getting from that?
Thank you. Candidly, Councilman Bullock, we transitioned to a new system because the old system was no longer going to be supported. We, the, the old system was an Oracle product and it was called E-Business Suite, and it was an on-premises system. And it had its warts, but we knew it. The vendors knew it, the schools knew it, and I, and it was past its supportable life. The Oracle was sending out messages to us and to other clients using what's called EBS, it's usually shortened to EBS, that we're, you know, we're, we're sunsetting this product and you need to move to a different product. So I, I, finance people are generally pretty risk averse, and I think we, we, we liked the system that we knew and, but we really had no choice. I don't want to sound like we, that nobody on our side was visionary. There, there were some folks who were saying, we need a, a better system, but, but they weren't going to support the old system anymore. That said, we did a very rigorous RFP process, and we went out and had a, had a lot of, a lot of candidates apply to be what our new system would be. And we ultimately, after a very rigorous process, selected another Oracle product. And Oracle is a particularly big player in this space and they're well-known. And we also did an RFP to have someone help us implement the Oracle product to a K-12 system. And, and it's cloud-based, which has a whole range of positive aspects. We're, we're still in early days of the new system, which is called Fusion, Oracle Fusion. But we, it ultimately will be better, or it, it has a lot more functionality than the system that was 20 years old and that we had a lot of internally-developed systems for it, like they were homegrown. The Fusion system is very good at reporting, it's very good at being trackable and auditable. So the Fusion product, which other various big districts have, have also selected, when it's up and running and firing on all cylinders, it's a better product. But, but there was no explanation, no good explanation for the, the snafu that happened with the migration. Like that wasn't part of the business plan. So I don't want to suggest that that was just growing pains, that was just a, a big technical mistake.
No, no, thank you for that. And you anticipated another question I was going to ask around functionality, so I think you addressed that. The other part I would ask, in terms of the new system, additional financial costs with it, or is it, is it more expensive, less expensive? Is it a system of what you expected?
So far, it's about what we've expected and it's about what we, the money that we asked for and received from our board. Interestingly, the cost of the end-of-life EBS system was going up and up because one thing that Oracle does is, as they try to move from one platform to another, if they have stragglers, and we were kind of a straggler, they jack up the, the license fee. You know, they very much say, okay, we really want you to pick our new whiz-bang product, but if you're insisting on staying with the legacy product, we're going to increase your license fees. And you have nowhere to go because that's your system. So so far, we have, it's, it's about the same. It's a significant amount of money. For a seven-year implementation, we're in the neighborhood of $30 million for both the, the purchase of the, the systems, the loading it up, so that's, that's a significant cost, which is why we, we're so methodical about the RFP processes. But it isn't, it isn't appreciably more than the added-up amounts of all the other programs and licenses we had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up. You had mentioned, Councilman Bullock, you mentioned that the system was old. How old was your, the system and the school system now?
The, the previous system?
Mm-hmm.
It was 20-plus years.
So nobody knew there was time to change that? And then you mentioned something about the process. So you were looking at changing the process, am I correct?
Yes, and-
So did you, but did you reach out to the vendors when you started that process instead of waiting till you got the software and then reach out on, when you going through that process of picking a vendor, did you send out any information to vendors to let them know we in the process of changing the software?
Yes, we, we did notify our vendors of, of both parts of the, we're looking, we're looking at a new ERP system, and then when appropriate, we told them we have a new ERP system. Yeah, we, we sent out messages to our vendors about this.
Well, my question is, you, if you knew about the process and you knew about the system, you knew you were going to hire new vendors for that whole new system, right? So it had to be two different dates. You said you picked a new software, but you were intervening to other people for that, to hire through that process. So how is it that when you picked the software, you let the vendors know? I'm saying, before you picked the software, you were going through the process of hiring a new vendor. Did you let the vendors know before then? So it had to be before you picked the software. Because I think if we were, if you would have told them about the process and not waited to get the software, at least they would have known you were in the process of picking new software. And if you got software for 20 years, how long was it going to take before you say, we have to get some new software? I mean, 20 years is a long time, so somebody should have known it was time to change that process. We wouldn't need be in this meeting talking about somebody not getting paid on time, like paid late. I just think when you started the process, the vendors should have been known, they should have been told that we in the process of getting new software, not after you got the software. So I, I just think that's probably where the problem came at, instead of waiting till you selected the process. I mean, the vendor or the software, the process should have been, let's also let the vendors know we in the process of changing it. So, and my other question was, were there any vendors who actually, because I know you were talking about not getting paid on time, were there any vendors in the system that paperwork was not correct? Because sometimes that, that do happen, your paperwork is not correct. So did you track that data to see if that, not particularly the software itself, but might have been an error on the vendors also?
Yes. For example, if, if I understand your question, when we went through those purchase orders that didn't convey, we found many categories of different things. Some, once we validated, everything was in order and it was paid immediately. With a number that size, we also found some where more information was needed either on their side or our side. We don't have a breakdown of that, but, but there were all kinds of, of various issues. The good news was, once we got up and running, we were plowing through them quite well. But yes, some of them, it wasn't a matter of just taking all those purchase orders and then they were all, all immediately approvable. We worked directly with the vendors to get what we needed. And a lot of times, frankly, the vendors, once we connect with a vendor, they can give us what they want. I know some of their frustrations arose when they, they hadn't heard from their point of contact, they didn't get paid, and they didn't know what the issue was. Once we got to the, the missing purchase orders and could say, we need this or we need that, vendors are very good at providing that right away.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to your team for being here. You know, to preface this, the city of Baltimore also transitioned some of our payroll software to Workday not too long ago, and it had problems. And it was not smooth, and many of our employees reported frustrations and, so, you know, I want to say this with a degree of humility, that anytime you change a system, it is going to cause some hardships. I think this one, though, was particularly challenging and having run a small nonprofit and kind of knowing that, especially when you're dealing in government or school system contracts, that it can really be life or death for a small, community-based organization. What's been the effort since all of this? I, I heard everything you said about catching up on the payments, but has, what's been the effort to make those organizations whole that received late payments that may not have been able to therefore pay their bills on time? Like, has there been any kind of conversation about rectifying and making those organizations whole?
I can say, from my perspective, in instances where payments were delayed, once, once payment was made, I don't know of any outstanding requests now along the lines of being, being made whole. I'm not suggesting that no vendor has thought about it or, or spoken about it, but in my, in my experience, once we get the delayed payment out to the vendor, it, it seems the matter, that matter is settled. We're only as good as our, our most recent invoice and our most recent payment, so I'm not, I mean, I'm not suggesting we're relaxing, but I haven't seen or said no to, for example, either a formal or informal request that because of this delay, such and such happened. And I, and I do think that in the instances of the ERP one, you know, like we're totally owning that and we're owning it. In other instances, it, as I say, it, there's as many different explanations of late payment as, as you could imagine. And in a significant amount of them on normal situations, it's either that the work was begun prematurely, which is very a complicating factor, or something that is needed for standard auditability isn't in place. And as soon as it gets put in place, they get paid. Now, certain vendors will, as I'm sure you know, they, they have instances where they put on their invoices that this, this amount is due and for every month that it's not due, there's going to be an additional, additional charge. We, you know, we work with vendors all the time, like that's why it really hurt us when our vendors were, were hurting. We have just daily, nearly non-stop interaction with our vendors. And I don't know of any requests that you mentioned, which I understand the concept of, where-
It just, you know, it, they still got to pay rent, they've still got to, you know, pay their bills. And again, just having been on the other side of the thing and having run a small, small to medium-sized organization that had a few school-based contracts, like, those are-
Yep.
-critically important, you know, everybody's functioning on their orderly timeline and it's-
I totally agree. One thing that I will say is, because, and we, we feel that kinship as well, and actually, on instances of services being commenced before a PO, the, the, the standard hardball, like, response is to not pay that, right? Like in the private sector, if someone does work without a PO, the, the biggest response is, well, you were at risk and you shouldn't have done it. We actually take pride in the fact that we always want to get our vendor paid. We look for reasons to pay them, we need to have what we need to have, but- We look for reasons to pay them, we need to have what we need to have, but I think with vendors who were negatively affected by this, we genuinely hope that the multiple follow-up, on-time payments will help deal with that issue.
So I just want to be kind of clear that, so what I'm hearing, what we're hearing today is that these were the issues, we, for the most part, have not diagnosed them and figured out where the problems were, and have more or less rectified most of those problems. I know, pretty recently, there was a news report about, I think it was like, Ice Cream Truck or something, that hadn't gotten paid, that was, I think, within the last couple of weeks. There were a couple vendors, early on, that got in contact with me. I, to be honest, haven't heard from them in a while, so maybe that's gone away, but just, I want to just be clear, the sort of claim right now is that we are more or less settled up, and we are not continuing to have this problem, or it is still ongoing?
I think that's a, thanks for letting us summarize that way. I think that we are out of the woods on the technical glitch that happened with our ERP that caused a big spike in late payments. When we reached out to our vendors, both in email and in meetings, and even tonight, we wanted to take the opportunity to say, "We think we've sorted out the ERP glitch, but please, make sure that you have all of the following things, it's in the documents, and make sure that you don't start work until you have a PO. Make sure that the end user posts her receipts when she gets it." Because frankly, we were trying not just to solve the unexpected ERP glitch, but to try to say, "Hey, we're going to sort that out," and we have, "but we want to try to also address the other, you know, sunny-day issues that do bedevil us." And if it sounds like, I hope we don't, I hope I don't sound like we're putting this all on vendors. A lot of times, it's the recipient at city schools who needs to be retrained, which is what we have already started and are doing, because they don't want to hold up payment for the vendor that just did a good job. They have to go back into the system and confirm it. So it's things like that. So we don't, it's night and day from the way it was in the summer, but we acknowledge we still have training and informational things to do with our huge number of vendors. And a lot of our vendors are small, local vendors who absolutely can't miss a payment, and we treat it accordingly. We don't think, "Oh, well, you'll get it in our next check run." Actually, we make, to give you a sense of the way we try to do it, we make very, very frequent check runs, specifically so that we don't tell a hard-working vendor, you know, "You'll get it, you know, in a month," or "You'll get it in two weeks." So we hear your concerns.
No, appreciate that, and, you know, look, I do hope we are bringing this chapter to closure, because I think it's critically important, and, you know, it's, we want to tell a great story about progress with city schools, and we know our partners are really important, and so appreciate the progress you have made and hope that we are able to get to a place where there's no outstanding issues. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trey, we don't have any call-ins, so no testimony. Madam CEO, go ahead. We're going to vote, we voted the first one out, we're voting the second one out, but I want to say that, as a committee chair in this committee and council, we would like for you all to come back and give us an update on both of these particular resolutions, so we know it's smooth, people getting paid on time, how many athletic trainers we done hired, and where you in that process of hiring more. And we're talking about the incentive, not just the salary, but work on housing, put some incentives there so they can move in the 12th district, while they're athletic trainers, and, you know, get more here in the city, because if you only have three and we have all these schools, it's still a little scary, you know? So, um, thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Mr. Dolly. Thank you for your staff. We will be voting this out. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Bullock. Councilman Stokes is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter and Councilman Torrance are absent. The motion passed. This resolution was placed on second reader on the next city council meeting. Thank you for your attending this meeting, is adjourned. Thank you so much.